This conference will now be recorded.
Item number one, consent agenda items, including approval of the minutes from April 28th and statement of bills from April 11th to May 8th.
I'll make the motion, but I want to make a comment first, please. Mr. Matisse, we haven't had our meetings on the web for the last two meetings. Because I was going to go back and kind of review some of the minutes. They're not on the last one, like in April, I think.
Are you talking the video?
Yeah, where you go on Edwardsville website and look at the minutes or the meetings. So it's kind of hard to review.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to review them when they're not there.
And just for clarification, you're talking about the video portion, is that right?
The whole meeting, the recording of the meeting. I do it through the Edwardsville website.
Maybe the link is missing, we'll check that out.
I think it should be there.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of comments that are made that don't get on the written minutes. If you want to go back and review minutes, I don't know how you're supposed to do it. With that, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Malat, a second from Councilman Schreiber. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Item number two on the agenda is request or comments from the public. Please keep in mind your comments should be three minutes or less. You'll start with your name and your address. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a quick signal to wrap it up. And just as a reminder as well, we can't respond from this segment of the meeting. A lot of times if we do have response, we'll ask the staff to respond or we'll be able to attend the meeting. If anyone would like to share, come on up to the podium.
So we have a petition to the city of Edwardsville.
Do you have your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Marlene Johnson. I don't do this very often.
That's fine.
Marlene Johnson, 507 High Street. Okay, so we have a petition of Edwardsville Heights. We have almost every signature of everyone who live in the area. And I'll read it and then Steve will pass you all a copy. We, the undersigned concerned residents of the Edwardsville Heights neighborhood, respectfully submit this petition urging the city of Edwardsville to initiate and maintain open, amicable communication with the Board of Public Utilities for the timely completion of the long overdue water line upgrade in our neighborhood, as well as the urgent replacement of a missing fire hydrant. Currently, the lack of adequate and up-to-date water infrastructure poses a critical risk to our homes, families, and the surrounding environment. In the event of a house fire or potential wildfire, the existing water resources and infrastructure, including the absence of a necessary wired fire hydrant, would be insufficient to contain or extinguish the fire. This situation endangers lives and property and demands immediate attention. We understand that infrastructure projects can be complex and require coordination between multiple agencies. However, the lack of communication and project updates has led to community frustration and uncertainty. As taxpaying citizens, we believe we deserve transparency, accountability, and proactive planning, especially when it comes to matters directly tied to public safety. So Steve's going to talk now. Oh, I'm sorry. Little bit more. Therefore, we are formally requesting that the city, one, engage directly with BPU to clarify the timeline and next steps for the water line project in Edwardsville Heights. Number two, prioritize the replacement of the missing fire hydrant in the affected area. And number three, provide regular updates to residents regarding the status of these efforts, including any obstacles, timelines, or decisions made. We are not only advocating for infrastructure improvements, we are advocating for our safety and peace of mind. Thank you for your attention for this critical matter. We look forward to your prompt action and leadership. Now Steve will do.
I get three minutes, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, wait, what do you got? Just a copy of the... Okay. You have it? Yeah, she's got it.
Steve Johnson, 507 High Street. On March 24th meeting, I was, came in here and brought up this issue about our water line up there and the lack of pressure, but it's turned into where it's got to be more of a safety issue. So I talked to Jerry Shrek, BPU, about it. He said he'd put us on the list about updating that up there and, well, and also do a pressure check. As far as I'm, no, I don't think we've been contacted as of today. Contact person's behind me, he said no. BPU, and Mr. Matisse, if you correct me if I'm wrong on this, you also talked to them, they said they had put us on a list of doing something about our water line and that we had an adequate fire hydrant in our area. Well, I know, tell you, four blocks away from the Woodberries is not adequate. And that, a fire hydrant is on Fifth Street, about halfway down from High Street to Highway 32. Reason why we, I say this, we actually had a small fire up there just a few weeks after that meeting. And I watched, of course, as neighbors, we all kind of want to see what's going on. So we walked up to the fire truck, didn't realize there wasn't a hydrant up there. It used to be a little blow-off looking thing, but I guess they hooked onto it on a previous fire and it was like water hose. Anyway, for them to, let's say, heaven forbid, the Woodberries' house would catch on fire. They drove up there and say an ambulance followed them up there. There was no way they could ever get hooked up because they can't pass each other. We watched the fire truck back up, head back up all the way to High Street, be able to come back out when they left. So with that being said, it would be 30 minutes, if not longer, before they could ever hook to a hydrant sufficient. So, you know, that also, I don't know whose responsibility is, but if you drive by the Fifth Street fire hydrant right now, you'd probably miss it because it's covered with grass and weeds. And I noticed that around Edwardsville, there's several of those fire hydrants that way. And it's a little tough to understand that. So this list that we've been told that we're going on, I guess, I asked, what's this list good for if the fire department doesn't have the resources to put out a fire? Or someone dies in the fire because they could not get the water supplied? Can the city live with that thought that our community could lose people because we don't have the right infrastructure in place to protect this? I want to thank their, I, people from our areas that showed up tonight, it was very appreciative to show their support. You'll see the copies, the signatures, virtually everybody on there, a couple of things I couldn't get because they were out of town or corporations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Sauer, 603 High Street. Now, I've lived up in that neighborhood on High Street for over 55 years. And I've heard the story about every time you brought it up, we're going to get put on this list. And I don't know what this list is, but like I said, for 55 years, we've been hearing about putting this on the list. And like I said, you know, we had a house fire up there. They ran the hose from Fourth Street, one of the other side of Fourth Street, down to the church, all the way into Seventh Street. Which took a huge amount of time. And like I said, at the end of the street, it isn't that end of the street, that end of neighborhood. And by the time you get, even my house, you know, you're talking about all this, I'm halfway up there, the rest of the neighborhood up on Seventh Street, it's just the, their, their guy, you know, the house is the guy, it's something that, so I appreciate that you've done this, and put it on the list, you know, thank you.
My name is Jenna Woodbury, 717 North Seventh Street, also a resident of Edwardsville Heights. We signed the petition, we are here in support of that. As other city residents have said, a month or so ago, there was a fire at the house across the street from us, and that took a water truck up the hill to put that out. There is no access to water here yet. And I believe about a decade ago, there was a loss of a house that John was saying caught on fire. They were unable to save any part of that home. It was pumping up the hill from the church, and it takes a lot of effort to even get a drizzle up there. We used to have kind of an antique-looking fire hydrant, and when it get, when we called attention to it, they just came and took it because they were also excited to see such a small hydrant. It basically wasn't antique, and I'm sure that someone is a very proud owner of a non-functioning residential fire hydrant, and then they did not replace that. So I think we're on the list for a line and a hydrant, as that petition mentions, and I am just here in support of that. Thank you.
Ellen Loomis, 714 North Seventh Street. My husband Phil and I are in the process of building a house right where that other house burned down. Apparently, that was a horrific fire because we find glass and shoe bottoms and all kinds of stuff from the probable explosion that happened, I would think, and I'm guessing we'll be picking up glass for the rest of the time we live there. But the fact that there's no fire hydrant there, I know, just getting new homeowner's insurance, that I could save a lot if there was a fire hydrant within, you know, 1,000 feet, let alone several blocks away. So I just want to say, I feel it's very important. Phil and I totally support the need for a fire hydrant in that area, and we haven't been there long enough to know about the water line, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Joey Woodbury, 717 North Seventh Street. I just want to bring up, from what I understand, this was brought up several years ago, and it was bid out by BPU. I don't know what the amount was, but it was, I was told by BPU that you guys had voted it down from the city council that it wasn't important enough. So I don't know if that's true. That's what I was told, that it was brought up, I think before even your time, that it was up for bid and it was turned down.
There's enough of that, maybe, to address this. Yeah.
You got a long meeting, so.
Yeah, we do. If you guys, normally we'll wait to the end of the meeting to give comments, but I know staff's already been working on this. So we'll give you the update that we have so far, and then just, just after that update, I will personally reach out to the CEO of BPU and let him know our concerns and get some details to see if we can be more of a priority item than just added to a list and kick me on the road. But yeah.
The, the main, the majority that we pick up, if they ever hook that to it, they would stop calling it. So if they would be on, so not with water line, so BPU, that comes a way to flush out the main, you know, like they have a main, and they need to test where they put a lot of fire hydrant, they got to know how this water's flowing up that main, it's, it's large. So what they have to do is, you have to get in a list, if you were going to do, is a list to put the, the item, to measure the water flow, the flow here, on that particular line, so they can have the data then to say, okay, how much more line, do they need a bigger line, do we need these other things, that they can add to the project list and get it completed. And so that, that's exactly what they're saying here, that we communicated a few weeks ago, and that the date, of course, is this summer. So at some point in this summer, they can have a summer project, because they do a number of other things. And they've been around preparing some other things as well here in town. So I know they're out there working. As far as the infrastructure, we don't have any control. This is BPU Utilities, these facilities own and operate and are managed by the Board of Public Utilities. So they are the kind, of course. However, we can be loud, sweet, you will, we need to be, and we'll certainly spread this message on and make sure that they understand that there is a, certainly an outcry about the lack of the potential fire. One of their, one of their comments was, well, we yelled that there's a fire hydrant within a certain amount of distance, and that does minimally meet some of the requirements. I talked to the fire chief about it. They got a loud fire there at some point, and they wouldn't use a hydrant in most cases because of the high disruption of water. So I don't know about the previous experience, when they mentioned they're building a house, is that where a, what a home may have burned out? That was a, it's a different mod than that one? So, so we know we've had a couple of fires in our experience.
Was it?
It was a little bit, I, I brush a little bit of light there.
There was another place.
It was a, it was a pretty, that was a pretty devastating fire, I'm taking it for granted. And so, yes, I think there is a, I would agree that there's probably been, and I hope that BPU makes this priority, and will take it. I hate to step out of line here, but.
Well, you, if, if, because we can't have like a dialogue after comments, but feel free to shoot an email. What I can tell you is this week, we will, we will prioritize it. The reason that I don't think that would have ever been a bid that came to our council is because we, we can't, we can't do anything with that infrastructure because we don't own it. And so a bid wouldn't have come to us because we wouldn't be paying for it anyway. It's all BPU, their property, unfortunately, because sometimes it'd be easier just to do it ourselves. But that's something we can prioritize, and it, in fact, are all of your emails on this list? I'm sorry, I didn't look at it yet.
No.
Okay, so anyone that's here, and Chantal, sorry to put this, put you on the spot, maybe leave your email, and we can send an email update as well as we're getting those in from BPU, so you get some follow-up on that, so you're not just wondering what in the world's going on. This is a priority, I think, after, especially after California and everything that's happened there. We want to make sure that we're able to take care of the safety of our residents.
We stated, our, of course, the main concern around this fire hydrant is responsible. I'm, the fire chief, I had sent the guys regular, we need around, so, but, once again, it's not a control, it's a, it's a, Mr. Matisse?
Yes. When I was on, on the fire department, spent 34 years there, there used to be a contract with the entire county from BPU. The fire chief would just have to request. They authorized so many new hydrants a year, and that's how Piper got fire hydrants almost everywhere out there. Because in the residential, NFPA says a fire hydrant has to be within 500 feet. That's the NFPA, NFPA's rule. So it, maybe we ought to look that up and see if they still have that, and then just say, hey, man, we need a fire hydrant right here and here. And they did not, there was no cost to the city or the departments.
Very good, very good.
So here, what's the answer?
I don't want to close that off if anyone else did have a public comment. I didn't want to, you know, miss your opportunity, but there were, I think, a lot of concerns around the same regard, and I wanted to at least get you that question that we had, and we will make that a priority. That's very important.
No questions on, what he just, can we ask a question on what he just?
If you stick around after the meeting, then we'll, we'll do the after. But since we can't go back and forth this time, but stick around after and we'd be happy to chat. All right. Thank you, guys. That, that is a big deal. You want to, want to make sure that's prioritized. Item three on the agenda, consider adoption of Resolution 2025-06, a resolution authorizing the tax exempt lease financing of city vehicles and associated equipment.
Certain thing from council. You have a background for item number three, which is Resolution 2025-06, your consideration for authorizing, senior. We entered into this tax exempt vehicle lease financing. We went up for bids, common item, first thing to go, is this was in the, during 24-year course summer, we budgeted for the 2025 budget, and this was an approved item in the budget for both the police department and the public work department. We then came, came before the council for approval to acquire those vehicles to order them in October. The standard practice is to lock those prices of the current prices for the next year's model, current prices. If you don't experience a price increases, and therefore you approve that, and now that those vehicles have been delivered once in the, I guess, transport, I suspect, what we need to move forward because we need 30 days net payment, so that day has to rush. Did go out for bids, for this financing package, in a sense, we use the same two, which is Midwest Bank, United Trust, that both have formed a standing relationship with, and their bids were, as you can see, 4.81% if you made with less, and 5.74% if you can make trust on all end, 223,581 dollars and six cents. Essentially, we will make repayments from lease financing, which we're not talking about this extent, but just not quite ready to start buying these out, right? That's just how they're money. While we want to protect our cash flow, maybe for the next couple of years, we're just going to make this decision, so, this is the best magic cash protection, the best rate we can get, not really a better rate out there right now, it's everybody's experience. Government-wise, personal-wise, commercial banking, whatever. So we would strongly recommend that you adopt Resolution 2025-06.
We, we have these already?
We have two of the three.
I guess you got the four?
Yes.
Make the motion to.
Wait a second. Why is one, excuse me, why is one police officer, one F-150, they're the same year, why is one about $9,500 more in total equipment?
I would suspect one of the administrative members is a patrol.
All right. So you did put a dog box on at the back of it, then?
No, I would just, that's already done. Here.
All right. No.
Make the motion to adopt Resolution 2025-06, authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year tax exempt lease purchase financing agreement with MBH Group, you have the tax of bank, bank for, now is that back to Midwest?
Yep.
Is it, okay, MBH, bank for vehicles for the police and public work department, including all three days.
Second.
We're going to vote here. We got a motion, motion from Councilman Malat, a second from Councilman Bishop. I did want to mention, six months ago when this came up on our agenda and approved, we did request an equipment vehicle rotate, policy rotation. And so I, I would appreciate seeing that come before us, before we have any other vehicle requests, so we know what our policies are and what we're working within as well. On that, will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Ed, Bob?
Yes.
Bullitt?
Yes.
Item four, consider the adoption of Resolution 2025-07, a resolution authorizing the tax exempt lease financing for acquisition of police department video evidence capturing systems and related technology.
I would call on Jeff Schwartz, City Chief, just to make the presentation. This is before you, somewhat getting merchant, before you, before you chief, and getting a note on the background, so they can figure out that it's important, it's getting, presented before you, I'll also point out that GTAC, group company, is an Edwardsville, Edwardville business, providing supply, or supply their equipment. So that, that would be, that, 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 looking forward, that would come to a, to a, so.
Good evening. Thanks for giving the police department the time to talk to you about our, our problems that we have and we're trying to address. Our strategies are not only operational, but we understand we have fiscal responsibilities. So we brought to you the equipment that we think will answer our needs, provide good service, and be within our financial parameters, I think. So what we're addressing today is the body cameras, in-car recording systems, and laptops. There we go. So like I said, I'm not going to read this word for word to you, but just in summary, our goals haven't changed. All we want to do is provide the best quality service we can to our citizens and do so in a professional way. We have an obligation to provide high-quality services to capture evidence, keep people accountable, and provide good, solid, high-tech services, best we can, in the confines of our budget, or on budget items in this circumstance. The problem is, is that our technology, and just when I say technology, please just understand, it's the recording systems and the laptop computers, just so I don't keep saying what it is. But, so our technology has reached its end of life, which has created operational issues, evidence collection, and operation field issues, whether it be efficiency, accountability, et cetera. Our recommendation simply is to fix this, we need to acquire new stuff. The end of life of this equipment, it creates problems that we can't fix, and if we, we can't explain it. In this day and age, there really is no reason to, to not have digital recording evidence, to not have systems in place, so we're kind of behind the eight ball on this. It's not because of a lack of management, it's just the situation we've had ourselves in. Total for this project is $179,000, and we're accepting the best bid from a business that has recently moved to Edwardsville. It's ESU Pursuits. Okay, so how did we get here? The background of this equipment is this, back in 2014 was the first time we acquired body worn camera systems and in-car recording systems, which, which is an upgrade. That was a granted fund, excuse me, a JAG grant awarded project. Quickly upgraded that stuff to outfit every officer, again, through a grant that outfits every person to where they all had their own equipment. Did I tell you this stuff, just so that you understand, this has been a project that we've addressed for well over a decade now. So we've done well getting funds from other resources, it's just kind of caught up to us where we know we need to come to you for the funding. The equipment issues that we're experiencing, it's not just technical problems with the devices themselves, it's with the provider. Digital Ally was a good partner for a decade, they really were, but it's really, it's behind the curve now. We're having problems troubleshooting, we're having problems getting returned phone calls, getting equipment. This is a Lenexa-based business, it's just down the street, which is another reason why we went with them, you know, product affordability in addition to customer service, local business, but now it's just not working for us anymore. In 2022, we did a temporary replacement, knowing that this was not going to be a long-term fix. We really wanted to go to a better quality product. We did some testing, we did evaluations, we did bidding, all that kind of stuff back in 2022. But we knew with the funding that we had, we needed to stick with the product. It was a quick fix, it was affordable, so we came to you guys then, Chief Matisse did at the time, said, hey, you guys granted us a CARES Act funding, it was a good temporary fix. In 2023, they discontinued their products, in the sense that the existing models that we have are not replaced with new products. The only options that we have now is to have refurbished, basically used equipment. So we're getting somebody else's problem that has a Band-Aid on it to put in our vehicles on our officers that serve our public. We don't think that's acceptable anymore, so we tried to move forward. This is a lot of words and some colors, everybody knows red is bad, right? So you see a lot of red and a little bit of moderate. What that is, in lieu of me bringing in a bucket full of equipment, that's every device that makes that equipment work. And I have personally trouble shot every one of those devices, in every car, on every officer that we have. Myself and Captain Todd know this stuff better than some of the technicians that they bring to us, that they, lots of turnover in that field, for whatever reason, the first-line guys. It's, it's too much work on our own staff to maintain this stuff anymore. So I'll answer your questions for that particular piece at the end of it. But now we're moving on to laptops. Same thing with the body worn camera in-car stuff, the laptop acquisitions took place in 2016, again, a grant-funded project. The end of life of those products is four years. So in 2020, we went out and got another grant. 2021, we deployed these, these devices. Here we are, so 16, 2021, 2025, and 6, here we are. We need the devices. Operational downtime, compatibility, device failure, decreased officer efficiency in the field, these devices power everything we do between talking to dispatch, talking to each other, talking to our ticketing devices, our records management systems, all of those things are driven through those laptops. There are guys on this department now who have never written a hard copy ticket and have never policed without a laptop. It's all they know. It literally is just the way of the world. So why did we select GTAC? And why are we asking before the GTAC laptops? It's all about a seamless compatibility between devices, body cameras, in-car systems, and the laptops. These laptops are a little bit bigger, I wish I had one to show you, but they're a little bit bigger, the screen is a little bigger, they're thin, and they, they have a lower profile than the, than the current ones we have, so you can see over them better. Like if you see an officer driving down the street, their tablet's up. Like if you see an officer driving down the street, their tablet's up, this is even lower, so it's a good feature, but the screen splits and it talks to the video recording system. That's really what it is. Um, we have some, some military-grade equipment, I mean, you know, Councilmember Mullin can, can say this, like, the equipment in those vehicles goes from the hottest of hot to the coldest of cold. You have to literally warm your car up so your computer doesn't combust when you turn it on, like it has, it's a whole thing. Those things experience weather hazards all the time. So this is a high-tech, high, uh, quality machine, um, that gets good ratings and it's, um, it's relatively affordable. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good device for us, has all the GIS mapping, talks to our, our CAD, our dispatch, all those things, it's seamless. That's the whole idea. Um, of course, we wanna have, um, protection, if you give it to a cop, we can break it, that's what it comes down to. But they have five-year bumper-to-bumper, they call it bumper-to-bumper protection. You drop it, anything other than it getting stolen, right, which we have our own insurance that way, but it's gonna be protected. Um, it's compatible with all of our other devices, that's, that's why we like it. So we did go out, knowing that we're, we can't just pick who we want, we went out and got bids. Axon, I'm sure you've heard of Axon, you've probably seen Axon on TV, it's very popular in the metro across, you know, across the country. It's also very, very expensive. Um, their quote for just products alone, this does not include laptop services, this is only their recording equipment. It's almost fifty-five thousand dollars more for just the recording equipment. We didn't feel that that was a responsible, um, approach to take, we thought we found a good product, so that's the direction we're going. Motorola, you've heard of Motorola, which is also watch guard at one point in time, organizations are moving away from it. Um, we did taste, we did test, excuse me, taste it, we tested it in two thousand twenty-two and it didn't get good responses. Battery failure, inability to sync between officers and their patrol cars, um, so it's a product we're not even looking at. We wanted to get a bid from them, but they didn't really want to give us the number without a sit-down. We said, we're not wasting our time, thank you, but no thank you, so I don't have a number to report to you. Um, grant considerations, again, we wanted to figure out how to fund this in the least, um, impactful way to the city's general funding, especially given it's not a budget item. Those are the grants that we looked into. We had personnel who are savvy with grants, I didn't do this myself, but we had people help us and say, yep, everybody got together, pooled our information. Nothing came across the table for us to apply for a grant. So while, though I'd like to continue our program of grant funding, as we've done for the last decade, it's not there. Um, so our options are finance this, um, this project, you see the numbers there, that was the most competitive financing, uh, number we got. Or we kick this down the road a little bit further, which just prolongs the problem and eventually we may not have, we may not have equipment, is really what it comes down to. Because, uh, body cameras are not syncing with vehicles, uh, we can't buy the batteries that we currently use or are trying to use for these body cameras, they don't make them anymore. So we're using, we're using makeshift larger-sized batteries, which are cumbersome, they don't fit in the pockets of our, um, our vests. It's just, we're, we're literally piecing things together. Um, so we could kick it down the road a little bit further, although admin doesn't recommend it. It's not the best high-quality service that our systems deserve and our officers deserve the protection and they also deserve to work the highest quality equipment we can give them. They're just like any other organization, so. Questions?
What do you imagine is the lifespan for the equipment, how long should it last?
So the, the plan is five years. We think that, so you were, in, in the last segment, you were mentioning, we want a rotational plan of equipment. This would be one of those items, a capital rotational program that we think that we should plan on. Um, we do expect downtime in any, with any technological device, you expect it's gonna break, it's gonna fail, whatever the case, but about five years, generally speaking. I think that that's a, that's industry, Axon's was five years, um, this was five years as far as, they don't offer a refresh. When I say refresh, Axon's refresh is two and a half years, will refresh all of your equipment, that was probably a big incentive that they offered. This program doesn't offer that, but, but the five years is a pretty good standard, I think.
Are they compatible like with Bonner and KSCA, or do they communicate that way or?
Okay, so, so Bonner Springs, they use Axon, they, they went with that program, I wanna say, every bit of five years ago. Um, I, I spoke to Captain John Diaz with the Kansas City Kansas Police Department last week and they are looking at Axon. So GTAC, to answer your question directly, does not talk to Axon in any way. But we can share that kinda video evidence easily, we create links these days and it's all cloud, transferable and there's custodial, you know, chain of custody, all kinds of stuff with evidence. It's a good product, just for a point of reference, I didn't have this in my, my slides at all, but like, um, Wyoming State Patrol, Nebraska State Patrol, Florida Fish and Game, these are some great big organizations. They're not, you know, Wichita PD, Grandview, Lawrence, they all, they use GTAC products. Whether it just be their laptops or their in-car recording body cam, in one fashion or another, these large organizations are using this product as well.
Okay, Jeff, with the, uh, with the new building coming on, is it going to, do you have like a central unit inside the new police station that it would talk to? Or like a motherboard, I'm not a high-tech guy.
Sure.
Like a motherboard kind of a thing?
And I'm not either, I, I know enough just to screw things up, right? Um, it doesn't have a motherboard or anything, it, 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 it all talks to the cloud and it's all web-based, it's, yeah. There, there's no longer going to be an external network storage device, it's, it's completely different.
With the new building?
No, no, absolutely not, and no, it, it would be integrated very well.
All those lines, there are, there are people that have installed, you know, in the middle, which these apps will be installed in the neighborhood, so it's a sequence, all video evidence is in one place. As far as communication between Bonner Springs and, this, as the diet commissioners stated, should communicate using all the apps we use now, their chat systems and things like that, so that, that will work. So we communicate with them, we can see what they're doing, they can see what our message back and forth. So that still will remain because these particular laptops will still carry all those apps that we use currently.
And what fund will this come out of, since it wasn't in the budget?
Special sales.
Are we on to where the police department can use that funding now?
We are.
When you get it installed, I wanna tour one of those, ever one of those rooms, but I don't wanna be in handcuffs while I'm in there. I'm prepared to make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven. Request of purchase new body worn cameras, in-car cameras and laptops from GTAC and authorize city manager to enter into a tax exempt lease purchase agreement with MBH Bank for financing due to the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five, two or seven.
I say.
With a motion from Councilman Malat, a second from Councilman Mullin, will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreger?
Yes.
Haggard?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Item five, consider, thank you, Jeff, sorry, officer short, um, consider authorizing the city manager to purchase a twenty twenty-five Sani?
Sani.
Sani?
Sani, thank you. SY twenty-six excavator from State Tractor and Equipment.
Mayor Council, thank you, we have, uh, Mr. Brian Hudson once again, I've never purchased an excavator. Hopefully you can do that and there's good cause that he will give you that information on that move by.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, as agenda number five is in front of you, is to authorize the city manager into, uh, contract with, uh, state equipment, state tractor equipment uh, for purchase of a twenty twenty-five Sani SY twenty-six. Um, impact is thirty-six thousand, seven ninety-one, um, sixty, um, and that was budgeted, uh, for the twenty twenty-five, uh, where we put in a hundred thousand for new equipment. Um, the background on this, and I have some slides afterwards, was a focus in twenty twenty-four, um, when I started, was to take a look at our current equipment that we had to see whether it was still able to be used for our needs that we needed, um, and what condition that those were in. Um, at that assessment that I took, we, if you remember, we had a nineteen eighty-nine, um, side mower, um, Tiger side mower, um, that was past its useful life. Plus, we also already had a Kubota tractor that had a mower on it, um, so the decision was to get rid of that, uh, Tiger mower um, and use the Kubota, we only needed one with three employee, full-time employees, we only need the one, um, and make that, that change to that, which would open up a piece of equipment for other things, needs that we needed. Um, it's taken me a little bit of time to figure out the city and to see the importance out there that I'll show you here in a little bit. But, um, a mini excavator is a highly needed piece of equipment for this, for multiple reason of repairs, um, and taking care of the city as well. Um, we did take four bids, uh, through, through Sourcewell, uh, State Tractor was lowest bid with the best warranty, um, offering a Sani S twenty, or I'm sorry, a twenty-six SY. Sani comes for government, comes with a standard five-thousand-hour, um, I'm so, yeah, five-thousand-hour and sixty-month warranty on that. Only, that's only given to municipalities, um, if you buy through Sani. Um, my foreman and I went up to Sani, or to State Tractor, uh, they actually brought this unit in town so we could try it out, so we have put our hands in it. Um, they brought it up from Springfield, um, so I have actually seen the one that we were requesting to purchase. Um, we put it to action up there on their lot, um, and was very pleased with it as well. Um, Sani is a big organization, it's coming in, I believe it started down in the southeast, um, and it's graduated, it's a mining equipment company, um, that has, has started to just move itself back north. Um, it's started to become very popular around the Midwest here now. Um, so going forward, uh, staff would like to recommend the city council authorize the city manager purchase a Sani twenty-six Y excavator from State Tractor in amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty cents. This is the two options that we feel as staff that we have here is, is we can rent a mini excavator, we have plenty of work out there to do it, or we can purchase a mini excavator. Uh, one of the things that drove the decision to this is our cemetery fees. Currently, right now, we're paying a, uh, a contractor seven hundred and fifty dollars to come out and dig a grave. At our current fee, we're losing money with what we're charging now. We also ran into a problem this last week with this contractor that we have on board, that didn't know whether they were gonna be able to get here in time to do that. Guess what, we have no other way to take care of it. Um, so I started looking at things and roughly yearly, we do twelve burials a year, roughly, twelve to thirteen is what the average was. Whether it's a full casket or cremation, they're just mixed up different years. Um, so what we're doing for twelve barrels a year is basically twelve hundred and fifty dollars, um, equals fifteen thousand dollars, okay? You'll see the charges over there, I'm not gonna go over all of them, but they do fluctuate and change depending on what it is. The other thing the contractor did this year is they added a fee for travel. If you're out of fifty miles, they're gonna add you a travel cost that we haven't experienced. If we rent an excavator, our cost per grave for us to do it would be fourteen hundred and seventy-six dollars and eight cents per grave that we were almost faced to do this week to get, um, this grave dug for, um, a family here in town. Um, it would be a two-day rental, because we have to dig it and then we have to backfill it on the next day, so that's where you come up with the fourteen hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um, with the labor cost, roughly at twenty-one fifty-two for labor, um, we're losing, if we did this, we'd be losing almost two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eight cents, um, per grave, doing that route. Purchasing a mini, mini excavator, these numbers were done a while back until, um, I basically put an average cost in there, what the bids were. A purchase price of forty thousand dollar, operation cost per grave is only ninety-six oh eight. Uh, even figured in the machine cost per hour is two fifty for this size of excavator and operator cost of twenty-one fifty-two an hour. Machine that we have is gonna have zero hours on it, it actually has point one, Trent and I got to put point one hours on it while we were using it. But if we did purchase this, basically, if we did nothing but, um, dig graves for it, we would pay this machine off in three-point-three years. It would pay for itself by us doing the, digging the barrels ourselves and having that. In that three-point-three years, other repairs that we could take care of that would be free, it costs, is eighteen covert pipes, we identified over the winter, eighteen covert pipes that I'll show pictures of that need to be cleaned out. Um, we have noticed ten sidewalk sections that are needing to be replaced as well, some type of, uh, work needs to be done with that. Uh, we have a water leak up at the cemetery, plus four other faucets that need to be dug up and repaired inside the cemetery. Um, small asphalt repairs, small curb repairs, um, and clean, trying to clean off the boat ramp down there when it silts in, um, through the heavy rains. Um, and then, of course, one thing that this city needs is, um, some ditches addressed, certain areas where the water's backing up to the ditch and then it starts leaching underneath the pavement, it causes the pavement to go bad. Um, so those are a few things that we've looked at, that we could use this piece of machinery for. This is a couple of spigots that are up at the cemetery, um, that are in need, the pink flags mean that they've been deemed that they're either not working or broke, of course, both these are broke. Um, one of them's been leaning pretty bad for some years. Here's a couple of the pipes, this is only two of the, the number that we took, that, um, if you're not, if your pipes aren't, especially with the concrete pipe, the one on, would be my left, I'm guessing it's your left as well, is a concrete pipe. If the water's not allowed to drain out of that, that water is standing inside that concrete and just deteriorating at it. You've gotta get the water out to keep that infrastructure in good shape. Um, the one on the right, um, is one that came out of Williamson Farms, as we know, Williamson Farms isn't very old, but there's no water coming out of that. Stagnant water, mosquitoes, not being able to drain, and sometimes gonna get plugged up where nothing's gonna be able to drain out of Williamson Farms. Another, uh, use for this is to tree removal around our inflows and outflows. Uh, the one on the left is the, uh, box covert that's down, um, towards Wood End. Um, with a mini excavator, we can get down there and remove that large debris and get it out of the way where heavy rains come, plus it stops it from going to the river. Um, the one on the right is an inlet that is on a hundred and tenth that, since I've been here, um, we have dug down there, taken us three days by hand to clean that out with pitchforks and we usually like to wait till winter when the snakes aren't out. So this is, this is a current picture that was, uh, just there three days ago, that's what it looks like as it comes down, um, the creek there. Cost benefits, um, on most burials, currently the city loses money, um, KNA is raising the prices and will continue to do so as the years go, um, which we have a choice. We can raise our prices or we can keep our prices status quo, um, still have the machine paid off in three-point-three years. The city will still have to rent machines to get other jobs done. If we don't purchase this, even for just burying, I'm gonna have to go rent one to get some of this other work done as well. Um, the benefits, the, the city would no longer have to have KNA for burial services. Um, the city would also assume all profit from the burial services, basically, that's where we hit the three-point-three years for it to pay for. Um, public works can assume more work and improve the community. Um, and the city to protect our current infrastructure is what we're out here to do, is to keep our infrastructure in good shape. Any questions?
I know some people that have the new Sannys, that are relatively new to the area, they love them. They're, it's been, they're less expensive to operate, to maintain, plus they, they were a little upset when I told them about the five thousand sixty-month warranty, it's like, how can we get that? But everybody has one, loves them, they're getting away from Caterpillar and, you know, all of them.
Not to sound like a total jerk, but why would we go in the hole on burials, shouldn't we be adjusting our fees accordingly? I mean, I don't wanna gouge anybody especially, but we shouldn't be going in the hole as a city on any service.
It just kinda came up when I started looking at things that we could use it for, is like, and the KNA did just raise their prices in twenty twenty-five, so it just came up basically here in twenty twenty-five, that we would need to raise our fees.
When would, uh, you take possession of the excavator? Escavator?
It's up on State Avenue, State Tractor, as we know, is in Wyandotte County. The salesman asked me, the salesman asked me today if I had known anything and I told you, I said, Steve, it's Monday night. He's like, oh, I think you forgot to tell me night, it's Monday, so I'm calling to see if we could take possession of it immediately. I left my phone in my office, just in case he's calling to see whether I'm out of here yet or not.
So we're working on a new building, is there an indoor spot for this?
Oh, yes, yes.
Wyandotte County, purchase. There are no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve?
I will make that motion to approve.
Second.
Manager to purchase twenty twenty-five Sani SY twenty-six excavator from State Tractor Equipment.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Malat, a second from Councilman Bishop, will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreger?
Yes.
Haggard?
Yes.
Bullitt?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Make the call.
Yeah.
I'll go call him right now.
Item six, here's staff presentation on the development of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget.
Mayor Council, thank you, item number six.
Thank you. Item number six. So here we go. Twenty twenty six budget development. Everybody believe me, I have a few slides. Pick off the, as the city manager said, pick off twenty twenty six. I have a couple of things. To give the budget, councilor. Just to look at the world overview, it's gonna be a little confusing. People on the night is that both member groups here over in, some of them sort of seem similar. Are talking the same language. I would be embarrassed to staff. So in terms of the expensive budget output, now some of these dates are actually scheduled. For some of the members who are covering the city, you can see here. Short people off. This meeting, it's about being trusted from our auditor. They sent at the next time meetings, we have to, uh, mention the management. Be able to do that. It is the challenge to be able to run budgets properly. What we are, we should share this over. What we will present here is trying to get. Here in public weeks, we need to be able to evaluate the budget on the council. So this is really exciting. We're working on a lot of things. And if you set up, now many of the companies, the, our. What we there, if you apply, we talk about, you know, consideration of the R R. Especially there's some references to many years. You know. There's some, and we're, we're setting the general lines. Why, why is this especially for much, like, we have to, like, money. And I can't see it for months. So, you know, it's very wide that kind of, like, we have that. That's a, which I. Consider part of that, which I, I think. I mean, how that works. See that together. I mean, we, especially that last week, we bought. Wrap up, pockets, pockets. They, they, what's on your, of course. See, I have the, I have the, I have the, uh, that. And that last meeting, obviously, part of this budget is, oh, thirty days. She kind of gave us that.
Is that patient? That's what I was gonna ask. See how they're doing that right now. Do you know how close they are to the internet?
They've done the all onsite inspection. They've assessed everything regarding clothing and data. You know, system G I S and all that. That was close. He's preparing that data for charity.
And then you know, I drive around and I come into the gym with eight. The last guy that did that called us Ottawa. Ottawa report here ready for you. Standing right at that. That was on my what I was gonna ask. And one of one of my be office subjects is how is our gaming revenue? I understand the bills that it was three hundred thirty four, three hundred thirty four thousand a week. Is that a month? Is that like quarterly? The gaming revenue.
That's annual, right? Is that an annual payment?
Is that is that per month? Because this set of bill said it was three hundred thirty four thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. The year.
That's why I thought it was annual because of the amount. But I thought it was supposed to be four hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, they do that in over years.
Okay. I had that same question here with the gaming revenue is would that have been in the special revenue section of the presentation? Oh, it's straight.
Yeah, so if you're talking about special highway, special sales. Gaming revenue is just something we get interloped with.
Okay, the question I have then, are we getting our fair share of that or is there any checks and balances on?
Yes.
We are getting what?
I can say that with high confidence, yes, because they give us a presentation out and answers what colleagues are saying.
That's a good big question. So you're on the pilot for B P U. The franchise fee, could that have something to do with the pilot work? Do you would win for that pilot to be put into franchise fees?
Definitely we can't because franchise fees have to be provided utility and we can't apply it to public utility. Which I know I went more than I should about this for us digging. But they they should be at least required to follow some rules and regulations in our city which they do not right now. We have no agreement.
We develop a certain amount of paranoia when you're dealing with money. I guess I will say that out now.
Amen. So I'm just back up very quickly on the gaming revenue as you're looking at the revenue report. It says gaming revenue plus this is target four hundred fifty thousand. Two days we collected a hundred fifty thousand of that, forty two thousand. So if you go across that's how they're set up.
Yeah, that's making sense.
Right, so that's trending, okay. We're on target, we're about to send for bucks.
I remember we we didn't over expect on that where we did that budget originally when that casino first opened. Cautious about how much we expected. Okay, thank you.
I had a couple of thoughts or questions and this some will sound like a broken record probably from the last year of the report. So we had three items come up this evening that were budgeted. They were in the budget from before, but if you if a resident came to me and said, show me where that was in the budget, I would be able to tell them. Because I have no idea. And I think that's where an itemized budget would help us. If there's a line item given for any pick an amount like anything over five thousand dollars here's I could show them. This is exactly where we had this vehicle coming out. This is exactly where this excavator was coming out. Whatever does that would help me to feel like I have the information instead of like just passing in the levy that's eight million dollars. That's kind of like a gray area to have it more detailed so that we can see, okay, this department's budget is this much. And I did have a question when we saw the special sales tax come up with Public Works and Fire Department on there. Were those items included in their like Public Works budget, Fire Department budget? Or is this something that wasn't included in the budget that was presented to us? So like for twenty twenty three, for example, the Fire Department used one hundred ninety nine thousand. And street Public Works was one hundred seventy six thousand. Were those included in the budgets that were presented to us? Or is that in addition to the budgets that were presented to us?
I can remember that in this short sample, you're seeing consistent pay. Vehicle line, Fire Department, that's because of the past. These big trucks paid for them. Yes. Fun. Payments. So they have to be budgeted regardless. We have this truck actually, right? This is where you they were Fire, Public Works, Parks were creating, Full Sunset, those really created a lot of these particular projects. So you'll see that even the equipment, some of the street makers, the transport. They include Public Works and the special streets, rural payment. Sometimes they create a certain street project out of that. From speaking in general terms, Fire budgets, twenty twenty three, even moving forward, we have to earmark those payments. Fire Department, Public Works who has a vehicle, we have to earmark some of those things. So as they correlate, how do you read the budget? When we run these reports, we see that, we see that these are tied. These courses are tied to this well in their individual department. And there was some preservation of pay, the vehicle payments we made. And earmarking these particular funds for that particular department. Paul talked about need to prioritize parks investment. And the only place they get that is on the special sales tax. Said, hey, we're not really going after new equipment for the, say, the Fire Department who spent a lot of money out this time. If I were you, so they didn't get, uh, but now the term, uh, somebody else is turning. I think we got this by legislation, right? And that should be added at least to our business dollars. But they will have payment that we just approved. And moving forward, you know, earmarking, just figure that. And then moving forward, when we did this budget received in the, sorry, the long way to what, twenty twenty six? That will be a payment that will be in that making received. Whether we what we presented, I mean, just don't recall. This was the big, hey, here's what listed. So can't speak to that without going to the book.
Well, I know.
Fair enough. Well, and I think since we're not, we are not budgeting those items. Because they're they didn't come to us to for approval. I that I mean for for earmarking the budget. I don't know that that came to us because it's not in the mill levy. And so we set a mill levy at our budget for the general fund and debt service, right? And so it would help me if for twenty twenty six, if we had these included in those department budgets. And then even if it's noted requested out of special sales tax payment currently out of special sales tax, just in my, how I can organize things in my mind, that would help me.
Associate that with lines of government, they're general fund. So not general fund, this is special sales tax. And say, Public Works needs this vehicle to pay dollars.
Right, that would help me so I know what is our Public Works budget overall for twenty twenty six? What's our Fire Department budget overall for twenty twenty six? If that makes sense? And then we can, it it helps to kind of keep those in chunks and then see where that money is coming from, general fund, special sales tax, whatever. So it isn't a surprise. The other thing I would like and also can, I mean, feel free to to give some feedback to as we're going through the budget process. But one thing that I've noticed especially larger community governments is they'll start at the full amount. So if we get all of the appraisals in and the assessments in and they say, okay, well, this is how much the amount would be if we take the full mill increase compared to revenue neutral. A lot of our, at least our neighbors start that budgeting process up here at the top. And I would prefer our city to start at revenue neutral, started a revenue neutral budget. And then if we're going to increase anything, then bring that before us. See, this is where we want to increase, this is why we want to increase. It's just easier to work from there instead of if we go, well, you you wanna mills increase or we wanna go revenue neutral, any of that. Then all of a sudden it seems like a budget cut, even though it's actually the same thing. But that's because staffs already put all this work into this budget up here instead of working from here and then going up, if that makes sense. Is that?
Isn't everything she you're asking for merit right here in the bills? Just about, it's right there.
I'm talking about the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Correct.
But if you want to know this year, it's right here.
In addition to the general fund setting, the budget, you know, they also have a hundred thousand dollars coming out of this, just so point of reference. It should be in suggestion, you didn't approve this budget. So that, but I get what you're, I think the issue is as you go, are not entertaining by this every day like we are. And you're going, okay, they asked how life, we're together. So maybe it's just a matter of format. In addition to this general fund of eight million dollars, you get a thousand hundred thousand. Did I hear that right?
Yes, and like I don't remember, like we talked about Public Works. You said, oh, well, they're earmarked a hundred thousand dollars in special sales tax. But I just don't remember this part coming before us. And so I don't know if that's, I'm usually here, but I just don't remember that piece of it. So it would just help, that would help me. In that way, it it might be something that we're, you know, really supportive, really on board. But I can say, oh, this is exactly, this is where we did it, this is where we passed it. And then when we're talking about like Hollywood Casino and sorry to ramble, but this budget, I don't want it to be like, well, you should have said it before. Hollywood Casino goes into the general fund. We have a brand new stream of revenue coming in that we've never had before and they pull it to to new administration coming in. And what I would love to to have is instead of that, like this special sales tax is already really taken a lot of priority from department needs. If it goes into the general fund, that's exactly what'll happen. But if we're able to even set that interest revenue to where we're as a governing body can look at that mail every year and say, okay, we wanna prioritize this. Twenty twenty six, this is the revenue from twenty twenty six interest income. What what does Councilman Mullin, what does Councilman Mullott, what is, you know, what 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 we want to see? Maybe some special projects or things going forward, that might be where we could have funded body cameras or or things like that that come before us. But it's not mixed into the the general fund that gives us a little extra savings for governing body priorities, I think, to just consider.
Couldn't you on like the the resolutions we or the ordinances we've resolutions we passed and I was spending the money? Couldn't there be a side note on there of this is coming out of this budget, the sales tax, which would simplify that, what you're trying to do right there? I mean, if it was a, if it was not budgeted, like the body cameras and all of that, couldn't it, couldn't you just state when you presented the package to us? This is coming out of the special sales tax?
Well, it's not budgeted, something worse should happen, you gotta find a place where it's spent typically in the past. Police department couldn't have tapped into this response, this late revenue. So this was one of those things where in the middle of unfortunate of a year, they said, we have this issue, it costs this much. We're in a position where that account can sustain that and number two, it's they're authorized to spend that. So that's, those are the rare things where it's just this emergency spending. Right? So we would just say, hey, we evaluated it, they're eligible to spend out of that, we need you to authorize that expense. Sure enough, right? So that that's how that particular works. We present you a budget package for things we don't know as part of what was here is that we may not have detailed an excavator. Who knew? I mean, a man gave and he evaluated and now he pretended it, and the money is there earmarked. But we have to earmark things we already bought for sure, special sales tax, buying vehicles. We're centralizing the vehicle payments and then from a different fund because there are six different funds paying vehicles. We don't wanna do that, I want simplification, right? No delivery. And so we're, what we're doing is just transferring that, and that has already been approved, for example, maybe two years in one, three years. You may add to that, which the Fire Department will come in a year or so, they order the ending to expect to deliver next year. You're going to have a budget for the payments of that, because it took twenty four, thirty six months to build it. And we already authorized that purchase. So what happened to that? And so I think the key here is just lagging that and saying, hey, the Fire Department has two point seven million, for example, in their general fund and personnel and all this stuff. But oh, by the way, they need this equipment and they need these payments made for these other things. I think that's a simple, I just wanted to come back to that. It's in a sense, I I will say, if you pigeonhole certain points of revenue, you're gonna find yourself having a negative sense of perceptions. Because you first have to focus on accounting rather than any level, right? So every new revenue source just shores up your general fund revenues, right? That percentage that has been knocking us down a lot. So when we don't have that cash on hand, anything we can get is to get more than you spend, right? So I just think it's gonna be a policy problem to say, this stream of revenue, other than these things that are special tax, they legislate, they statutory. That maybe suddenly say, and that's when you're gonna have to say, oh, by the way, we're gonna have to transfer this money. It's even more important though, is that we have this fund balance. And now that we have that fund balance, I notice we had three hundred thousand in interest, right? Of payments, revenue to us, put we spend it on this thing that we put in the back for, so for this new project. You just designate that rather than just have a policy body saying, you absolutely can only spend it here. So what you're gonna find is, number one, the next town could undo that. Number two, it is, okay, how do we manage that? Oh, by the way, if you can transfer back, we can we borrow fifteen percent in fashion balance, right? For example, you have a revenue source. Three years.
So I think maybe the way to address that would be just do it at the end of the year. So the end of the year, you could say this much money is left over from twenty twenty five from this earmarked. Because I think what'll happen is from years past history, if it goes into the general fund, the departments will use it. And so that money's not gonna be left over. Like the departments grow, equipment grows, and then it's not left over. But if we have it at the end of the year, then if we do need to transfer into general fund, then we as a policy maker forward can say, okay, let's put, if it's three hundred thousand dollars. Hundred fifty thousand dollars in the general fund, hundred thousand dollars toward body cams, whatever it is. But if it goes straight to general, then we're, even when we're in a healthy environment financially, we'll never have the opportunity because it'll just be absorbed. If that, and we don't have to discuss it tonight, I just kinda wanted to quote that out there for council to think about. And and see if that might be, since since we're not counting on it now, you know what I mean? Now would be the time before it goes into a budget to really give it some thought. And then the last, last thing on this, I promise, is the, if you look at this special sales tax fund, one of the main features of it for for our community to vote on that is the improvements to parks. And that, as as Mark had mentioned earlier, has really not been given a priority at all in this fund. What's the current balance of the special sales tax fund?
There's a hundred fifty thousand for the budget amount.
Yeah, I mean, like in the total funds, what's the balance? Okay. So we're only, how much do we bring in annually with this fund? Close to five hundred thousand? And we have budgeted seven hundred seventy five thousand? Well, and what I'd like for it to be, and and there's likes and needs and I get that. But since this is the only fund that funds parks and the other departments each have budgets, that we're more intentional instead of, well, a department needs, if they need it, they need it. But there's nothing for parks saying, well, they need this, here's a priority, hey, what are we doing? Or for parks than that, we had talked about. And what I'd like us to do is look about if there's cushion that's been placed in the budget somewhere to really consider what we can pull into parks for twenty twenty five. We've been talking about for a couple of years now, adding pickleball courts to City Park, improving the bathrooms so it's usable throughout the week. And the soccer fields are dangerous at this point. And so I would really like to see if we can work twenty twenty five magic in here to get phase two of that going for our parks. Because when we're bringing in half a million dollars a year that our residents voted in, and I mean, we've got seventy three thousand in twenty twenty one, seventy seven thousand, forty seven thousand. It's just not been a priority. And so I I would love to see us, see if there's a little cushion that we moved in there that we can slide over to get phase two moving.
Yeah. We can, this number can change. Certainly you could say, you know what, we're not gonna fund twenty thousand, we're just gonna put that back into parks. And I thought that was a priority for when we went in and I said, I think this is a priority, yes, and the group, yeah. Fifty thousand there now to strip again. Yeah, so we're we're doing that. Now, we also have the special sales tax. Probably a little bit caution. If it's just simply a fix it before, I mean, show you where this stuff can be, and that's not. Here it once again, I mean, not as healthy as we think we are. But we gave you twenty twenty five. This is for people. It's not bad. We just spent less, right? Made more, right? But if we're ever gonna move back in that direction, if some people, if not the builders are probably, our head. Can we, when do we re like reenter those kinds of things? Those things, huh? You're gonna hear a next presentation, which is if we're coming at zero, neutral, you're gonna be neutral, right? You're about to add an apartment. You approve it, that that's neither, but three million. General fund. We're gonna subtract from some of the legs, but if that's where we started, there's just simply no way. So that, I get it, some people start with a topic, they're looking at you thinking they've lived their way back down. You try to, but our job is to say, here is what we can sustain, we can tell. Revenue neutral sounds like a great idea, but if you can't provide services or do these other things. And what what happens, we're gonna have to say, we're gonna have to, that's the final, the common theory is, I think we're gonna give the best budget we can. And I can say for amount of fact, we're by places, very, very important. And so we're doing the best we can for that. And that was a one, we know reduction, and over the year, we've spent several, almost seven. Which is good, we can continue some of the trends. It's a matter of we had a department, yeah, consideration for additional personnel, load changes. That's, so I think you're gonna adopt some sort of policy action. If the collective tells us, want revenue neutral for first thing out of us, you're gonna have to tell us collectively. Our intention, building a budget, which includes the nation, that that is, be simple budget, of course, all these things. Include with you, yes, future presentations that adds another department. So again, and say helping fifteen percent.
And I just think starting there, I mean, that's that should be where we start and then work from there. And then we can see if you're saying we need to increase because of this additional department, then show us that increase instead of starting up here and then working backwards. Because that's what we had done years prior, and which is why we had to cut three positions was because they started up here and then we went. And then if if you could send us each a copy of or the presentation where we approve these particular special sales tax funds for each department, that would be beneficial. I just, there lots happen since then, I guess, and I don't remember it at all. And then I I would like to to at least see what the numbers were based to for City Park so we can start planning on it. And we're not midway through next year and still don't have numbers in the date. If we can get those numbers, then we can work it into this budget and see how quickly we can get it started.
First of all, ours is, we need some ground, uh, playground equipment. Some of that is your license, your, it's not, it's not, it's not station. Proving that may be a problem in the sense where we are holding, we're holding back, do we apply for some grant money on activities? So I I don't know if we can get construction timeframe in in twenty twenty five. We may have to increase spring, fall, so it's all, you gotta go off of it. That part's a gap, we just have to earmark it as well. So I just think there's some obstacles in the pace that I would like to do. Finishing that version one, however, we just haven't got the money to do all of that.
No, I know, I'm not talking about doing it all, right now, I'm saying we don't have any any of the numbers. We don't, we haven't looked into the soccer fields at all, we haven't really looked at the bathrooms at all. The pickleball, I don't think we've had people actually come out and, you know, just getting those numbers so then we can say, okay, weather's right now, but we can have a date to it. Would be wonderful.
I just don't know if you could have construction.
We won't know till we have the numbers, yes. Right, but if we wait until next summer, then the sock, like for speeding, there's certain seasons that you speed. And so we need to have a plan now so that we know when to start the different phases.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not being argumentative, but we have, phase two is what we're planning. We're talking about the pickleball moving, our playground equipment, placing one in the new green areas of the store. And then then you, then you address soccer fields between circles and tensions. So going, that's kind of the phase two, so that's why. So that that's our plan, we want to get this big down, we have so much capacity, part of management, all these other departments. So just, I think this is our capacity, we'll, we'll get this deep, we'll handle it, we'll get some bids, we'll get the people, we have the physical opportunity to engage with people. They built, I'm telling you. Think that was a good, at least for that time, cost benchmark. And so we, we at least know, if two hundred thousand, I mean, that's at least a close, both rank. And then what do you do with it, you know, if it needs some, you know, whole type of purpose or something? Like, whether it's put something in basketball, it's gonna be something else. So those are options. We're gonna do all the work, we have it. It's just a matter of getting this project first. In the budget, we'll have a bunch of numbers by August.
What if it's a pickleball, it's just a fad, and will it last two more years? It's a waste of money.
If, I mean, I think we also, it's a strategy for a built traction.
But if it just peters out, nobody's gonna go down there and use it. And then we're wasting two hundred thousand dollars.
We've got the baseball court, that's what we, I've got two basketballs. We got the disc golf down there, I don't think I've ever seen anybody play disc golf.
There's people down there, absolutely.
I'm least concerned about the pickleball. And it's not just seating that's gonna fix it, no. I would rather see them turn. And that will make our league a lot more competitive. Now, I know we, when we look at that, we talk about. So if you get, if the high school or something is beating up here. But it's very expensive. So we have to pick, now, I mean, you do other things, like, at least paying for that kind of stuff, I guess you can. It's a matter of what you want to do. Raise some of these, you spend all the money on special sales taxes. There are ways to do it. But if you add pickleball, moving the playground equipment and then you try to turn this issue away of one year. How about some of the bonding or some other play? Right now, it did save your more important anything, that soccer.
They are terrible.
I would leave a comment on that, was, did notice. Talking with Brian, he's been a lot of tradition with that. He's given his eye on it, and said, well, how can we treat that, that, what can we do? We got what's bank, you know, and that. So we're giving a better plan, we need somebody who's an expert in that kind of stuff to come help us out. There's no, we should ask for help when we spend that kind of money, you know. And so, but I, the previous, uh, our senior editor looked into the church, no, that's pretty expensive. No cheap way. But also, we have a terrible public market, it is, there's a very, we don't know, it's a low restriction.
But didn't the legislature this year pass a bill to cap appraisals on real estate? It didn't pass? I thought it did. Did she veto it, the governor?
As long as that is any reason, other than fireworks, we start one of them, and then they're like, oh, they're like, see.
I didn't see it, I was just wondering. I knew it was.
You went through the Senate and didn't make it through the House.
Well, I'm gonna be the odd man out and say that I actually am excited about pickleball courts. And I know a lot of people that play pickleball, especially firefighters that live here in Edwardsville. And so, yeah, I would actually like to do that.
Something for all the areas, but working, tracking down there, all these sets of cards.
Yes.
And you have improved some business, the changes and other things. There are some, there's a, a contract that says, hey, we did this. Did try to test this pickleball, you're, you're in the news, and we're, and we set up, we're making, sign up, your group can come in and play pickleball. Something we're used to, and we're gonna try to figure out. It is very popular.
I've seen that, I just wouldn't want that county like to go, because they've got several courts down there.
Yes, I think I'm saying. We'll, we'll put this plan together, we'll figure out where it's gonna be paid for, and maybe, maybe over some distance. Three hundred fifty thousand all in, so that's not quite.
It would help to see the plan, you know, just so we know it's coming along, there's plans and we can, we can know it's moving.
What we're gonna need from you is some sort of elected policies. Our, our, which would be providing a court that clears up second duty about who's spending what money. And that would be our first drive. I still like the ABC approach, with the options, the best three. It includes parks, it works, that's a good way. This is what town said, a county named, who, maybe did the budget.
I would like to see that interest to have separate from it, not just put into the general fund for twenty twenty-six. So we can see it.
There's no, that's, that's, that's policies to save. I would just like to see it. So this is, this will amount, well, we made, a hundred and fifty million, three hundred thousand a year. We're taking three hundred thousand dollars away, compared to, you know, this is fifty thousand. Put it in debt, which is gonna have a benefit. People have better. We can do whatever, the policy decision is, we want this earmark sitting on certain ways, we can do that.
I have, I have to disagree. The more debt you carry, the more expensive things are. The less debt you carry, the more things you can purchase. Just like the national debt. If we were not thirty-seven trillion dollars in debt right now, we would, this country would be going like gangbusters. But there's so much money going towards the debt, I just, I'm a debt-free guy. That's what I like, you know?
I think in our scenario, though, we have the revenue that's only put in the, there are issues. You can look at our future debt allocations. We're in a good position, it's all against, there's not something that has to go left. You're already covered, so that's the worst, bonded, we bonded, nineteen million, twenty million, sixteen. Plus all the other things that come together, like, if we're at least three states, they're on our debt. You can see, from back in ten years, I've been suggesting, our financial box, we're on a, we're healthy, we're in a good position. And then you can, so, then you say, hey, you've got these few million bucks, pay off these things. That's the, I agree, but half of three hundred thousand, I don't think you can try and go and go with debt and add it to it. Which one, right, twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen, what do you call it, right? Babies off. I just think the money for this order somewhere, that's, the house, the revenue, bills, there's ten point four one minutes. Do nothing but pay the debt, plus the special sales tax, plus other revenue, utility revenue, and market, so, so there's a number of sources already pending that. My suggestion, wrong suggestion, would be, then you maybe, I'm sure, I want to help. Therefore, a bond makes hard work. That's where we make up some. And I do think, you know, there's something, plus, if you're hearing people have very debt. It takes you to be, to help, sure things, to help. We projected around three percent of. Relation. That, that bill is thirteen percent. That's not very classic, there, but those things, ten percent of the bulk of the, so, that's gonna carry at least true.
I think the only difference, though, is if we're, if we're just absorbing it into the general fund for this interesting kind of, that's brand-new revenue, then when we get down to it, if we are like, we need more money in the general fund, then this body can say, put it in the general fund. If we want, if, if we have a couple of council people that wants to knock down debt, then we can say, let's put it toward debt. But if it goes into the general fund now, then we will not have that opportunity. Because as you can see, the general fund is, there, there's no room for even a two hundred thousand dollar improvement in park. So we don't have that, any, I mean, or anywhere. And you're, like you're saying, we absolutely can't afford it. Now, this would give us the opportunity to be able to have funds to put, if we want to go to the general fund, then we can do that if that's a need, but hopefully, that will not always be a need.
What you're not seeing is generating more money than you're spending. So, but that, that will, so, here. So if you would have said, hey, let's spend that in cash services, we could have done a hundred and some thousand dollars. But that's just a question, just about, cash. But we have cash, and you can do this with that. All revenue sources that go into the general fund, they build up as long as we have less spending and more revenue. Then at the end of the year, if you, if you say, hey, we have a million dollars, would you like to spend a few hundred thousand of that? You tell me the number on these other special projects, then you can do that. Now we have, you know, five hundred thousand dollars in cash service instead of spending five hundred. Right, you can do those things, right? We have the spending in the, out of the general fund. So if, so we can accomplish the same things without taking revenue and just saying, it has to go absolutely here, unless it's statutory. You're gonna get it all in one bucket, and you say, okay, well, that has a surplus in the bucket, let's spend that to some specific project. Or, by the way, next year, let's make sure that the parks, we can buy some of this stuff out of the general fund. You have the spending authority of all these funds that are currently, right? Okay, we have surplus, we're gonna add another hundred fifty thousand to the parks. You can do those things, we did it in the past, if you recall, all those, we had a, an eight million dollar budget, right? That spent two hundred thousand dollars on the cash services. We set that budget, I'm not suggesting that we do that, but at the end of the year, you have the surplus, and you wanna spend it down ten percent, you could certainly do that. And then you can designate, as a group, where you'd like that money to go. And you can do that in front of the budget, too, you say, if I policy, ten percent of any surplus, it goes to this extra.
I just don't think that's ever come before council before. I don't think one time they've said, we have a surplus, what do we wanna do with that? In the history of council.
Yes, because you've done the spend, remember I talked about this, this budget process over our last, you know, since July of twenty-three. Uh, what we've done is we've said, we want eight million, but we don't have seven million in cash, right? We only have seven million, you're spending into whatever cash is on, you're saving, right? Are you all these checks, and we're grabbing this other money? So instead of having eight hundred thousand dollars, you have six hundred thousand, because you only took in this much and you needed two hundred thousand from the city. That's deficit spending. What I'm suggesting to you is, we set a budget, that's a balanced budget, like we did. We want eight million dollars, we wanna spend, we're gonna have revenue, that's balanced. And then, oh, by the way, we generated enough revenue that say we have one billion dollars in our cash unbalanced. Would you like to spend ten percent of that onto some other project? Because it will still be given, fifteen to eighteen percent, right? Policy, and our bond, people aren't gonna say, oh, my gosh, what did you do? You spent this terribly over the years. So you can, we can have those conversations, we can have them this year, right? Doug might say, you can take out a little more.
I would like to see, maybe, yeah, and I, I don't wanna get a little labor this, I think we need to move, move forward, but maybe we can look at a couple of options, what you presented to us, like, having a policy that we're not gonna over deficit spend, but then also, at the end of the year, let's maybe look at, at a certain amount. Or if council wants to consider setting new revenue aside and being intentional with it, maybe give them some time to, to think that over and then we can come back to it.
Yes, I promise, finally wrap this up, we'll give you, as we hope, Barbara, give you the cross-reference of these departments, might be spending on these other special projects. And we will, we, we're gonna present a balanced budget, that's the end of the policy. If you have a different policy than that, then that's something you, right? You're loving a balanced budget. Those are our two promises, we'll go by your policy, we'll go by that. Give you a balanced budget, there's cross-referencing, but council can show you kind of what all the spending is taking place. It's much as possible, so.
Okay. I think we've killed that horse race. Uh, so item six. Here's our presentation on the Edwardsoh Public Library.
Well, what we're setting up here, for the background information, that shows the transition plan overview. Let's start from number one. We have agreed, we're gonna spend eighteen billion dollars on our carpetizations, and a new facility, we'll have a purpose complex, a municipal complex. And that includes on the east side, five thousand square foot of library space now. That includes multi-purpose use spaces, like meeting rooms, bathrooms, that sort of thing. But in that public engaging space, which includes the library, is about five hundred thousand, five thousand square feet. So that's really good, because we didn't really program for this. And so as we work through, we've gotten some good advice. Doug put in the building, I think, to give us a lot of open space with a library that would be very interactive. And I think it, uh, right now, it's about four hundred eighty eleven square foot. That structure, we'll be able to bless, have a functional open area, and, and, maybe on, say, this home furniture, fixtures, equipment, which weren't well-programmed, because we didn't know the program. Go back to, we adopted a certain assessment by another company, which at a time, that building did not include the library spaces. So we look forward as experts, we program that, and I think we come out with a good. I refer to Mary, she's been there, uh, been a good leader on that, uh, and I think they all enjoy the world out of Mary's. Let's, so, let's talk about it later. So I did this, Mary. So essentially, what we're trying to accomplish is getting a lowly controlled, if you will, lowly funded apartment level library, city library. So essentially where we're at, a lot of our structure is very simple, it's where in the local grid, statutorily, they did have that. And with, with that kind of library, so I've used the tax levy that they are applying right now. I used to say five point four one, well, a couple of years ago, but that may be recent. But it's four point eight eight bills, I gave you what a bill is, what the city charges. It's a little different from the county, but right now, you just said, I'm gonna charge four point eight bills for a library, you're gonna generate about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, again, one of the big priorities is this, is a thing, you have to want to anchor something. We don't have a downtown, we don't have these things, it's not tangible, you don't have a service. So I think that's really something that we can cheer off, you know, that we're gonna get something like this, and we can do it for less money. That's key, right? So we, we hope to show everyone on their tax bills that they have a redemption. It's, we're contracting, uh, county library services, and it has limited local control. As Mary will point out, that we have very limited voices on the board. We have people who don't live here in town that tax us for this library service. That, that can tell you that a park in front of them, or back there, they have probably, young, young kids, middle schoolers, all bikes can't ride. Limited control. Here's our desired outcomes, we want to establish Edwardsoh Public Library as a city department. I hope I'm correct. Fully controlled and funded by the city, with things, community-centered services and program, things that we want in our people, right? And, and we want to have, we wanna do it in a way that we're eligible for the Northeast Kansas Library System membership. And that's key, to inner local library model, grant money, technology, lots of cool things that they offer. And so we have to do it this way so that we can be eligible for participation in this. Transition process, we've got seven, we've got key categories, adopt a charter ordinance. They all know what a charter ordinance is, uh, we, we're gonna opt out. Then we're gonna create five ordinance, the city library, it's gonna be key for our funding. Allocate city funding, set up the facilities, and hire the staff, develop, launch the service, of course. And then form an advisory board, it says optional, but under our system, you do not have to have, it's good practice. But under the, the other system, if we did opt out, there is a library board mandated by state statutes, in which they are the passing authority, and they kind of tell you how to tax it. Right? So we're, we're trying to avoid that. Yeah, it's good practice for programming things, to have the library board, have one, yes, that sort of thing, uh, but it's, but it's certainly optional, it's, it's, promoted engagement, community. Any way that, hey, there's a lot of services, where you can public information, you can public socialize, promote things, and then we need to promote this service, it's brand new, we've never had it, it's a big sign. Step one, the charter ordinance, pretty simple, we're gonna opt out ten state statutes under the twelve, which is, right? It is valid. And essentially, that is charter ordinance, and if you don't, and it's two thirds vote, W. Martin, and it includes the mayor, and it is a publication. And there is a sixty-one day period in which it can be processed, as the charter ordinance. On expiration of that, you can see that we'll carry forward that, that ordinance, adopting the city library. So what this will do is it removes the taxing authority from behind that counter. Now, timing is important, right? They're expecting, uh, we have a, we have a, an interlocal agreement, and that may require renegotiation based on our timing, or there are certain triggers that we have to notify, and you can see that. But, but we're getting prepared for this. Create the library, after sixty-one day road test, we'll have an ordinance who says, we're gonna have a city library, five ordinance, and a community advisory board. In that ordinance, we'll, we'll spell out everything that is somewhat operational to the library, some of the structure, the library board, that's what we want in it. You can take stuff out, you can do whatever you want, you can add stuff in, which will have consideration, uh, for that city library and ordinance, off, or whatever they can commit, you can definitely. Allocate city funding, again, I told you, uh, about a hundred thirteen thousand is one mill rate for us, against four point eight eight bills on county level right now, against five point four one. Before, it has a lot of bills focused on paying for services that you can't really reuse, and taxes, and we can fund this the most. The way we're going to probably do it is the general fund. Now, you can say, in the general fund bills, no different than our debt, you can say, by policy, we're gonna absolutely, every year, have to spend three bills on the library. Okay, uh, again, you hold yourself, you only make me two, why make three, that sort of thing, right? So then you open fund your library, you can fund some. So I say, stay away from that. Just talk about, at the general fund, like the police department, fire department, public parks, downtown library. Uh, grants and partnerships, we have opportunity now, we can start a library, we have, uh, the Room in America Regional Council Board, we have an opportunity, you can donate there, and they are the five hundred C. three from the city, and they can give us the money granted to us without, and then we'll have these other. The Red Hat Men, the Library Clubs, all those kind of things that have partnered with us, volunteer, volunteers, library. So we have, we have those opportunities now, we can have it on the library. Facilities and staffing, it's, it's gonna be at the east end of, of the building, the building is east-west orientation, so north is, you know, towards K. third two. And Lake Street, that was East Department. So that's the orientation of where that's gonna be. You'll see this in pictures in the upcoming presentations over the next few weeks, with people with, I've got this, I'm getting in ways now. Uh, there are, in, within that five thousand square feet, shared restrooms, break rooms, you name it, we have it out there, meeting rooms, and public groups, child areas. So support staff right now, programming based on other activities of other libraries, where they're at, how they've done it, it's gonna be a sports, full, full, and a part-time mix, with a library director, which we're kind of having a part in. And we did here, right now, a place holder, about three hundred and seventy thousand, with materials, sixty-five thousand additional. Some of that's been a source of our interlocal library money we can do, and so that's a little plus. And participate in startup, well, we gotta have a building to deal with that startup cost, it's about four hundred eighty dollars per square foot. Furniture fixtures, there's a lot of, I'm not saying fancy, but think of quality, reinforced shelving, that can be moved, adjusted, that sort of thing to our needs. Uh, and some of the features that'll need to be in this library to make the space work as it does, you're gonna need to have it invested. And that, that's gonna come from two sources, I presume, that we will, we will be asking, as soon as we establish our library, the city library, when we talk to the county about the city, similar responsibility, that's the best of the city, to receive those monies in the budget process. And, and that will help me offset some of the building money that we'll be using for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, so that we can be on time, on budget with our facility project, and then have the money to do all the things that we want to do. And this, again, I prefer maximum programming. Internal programming of the library now is, is wonderfully anticipated, so the same eighteen million dollar recording, now more is going to this interfixing of the library. So we hope to offset that cost, we think that's going very well, we get a conversation with the city. Lots of processing, uh, it's just a matter of all the kind of tools and things you'll need, uh, once you start it up, and the drop-off box, these kind of things that were not anticipated originally. Technology automation, about two hundred thousand, uh, just, we're gonna be startups, so it's very technical world that we live in, in the libraries, and lots of technology that's gonna help with that. Admin and setups, some of the things that you just have to do, about fifty-five thousand, so excluding the personnel, we're worrying about that, nine million, which is unreasonable, that stand alone by itself. What you're saving on the cost of this building, is the catapult, the electrical, the plumbing, is shared, it's not separate, right? So the bathrooms are shared, those kinds of things, meeting spaces are shared. So we're actually saving some money in the whole, by not having to stand on that. Lots of library services, you're gonna need all this stuff, media books, media lending, all that stuff, and technology automation, public computers, we have lots of computer places, so. Computer lab is kind of where this started, I think, for care, control money, that sort of thing, uh, because we knew, in COVID times, we had lots of school children that didn't have access either to a computer and or their Wi-Fi. They had the computer, but where do you hook up to, right? They'll just offer that space. Youth and adult programming, uh, there's lots of activities, uh, in every library that we went to, there was adults and children all in the mix, and then the day. So, um, we expect that we'll have that art, major activities, things, crafts, and that sort of thing. And then, of course, getting ready to join that Northeast Kansas Library System, we'll have to have all this in place, so that we can submit an application and be part of that investment. Number six, form an advisory board, uh, or, can you just say it's optional? Uh, there was a little quick conversation, maybe we placed this responsibility to the city board. It could be done that way. Uh, I, I think one of our obstacles that's historic is volunteerism, uh, you get the same nine, ten people, and, and everybody knows. And so maybe this is a, the mayor and three persons, except this year, he's a mayor, that's very common in the structure, statutory structure. And the mayor serves as an executive, we find three members who just wanna serve on the library, five people. Programming, talk to the library director, those sorts of things, right? And again, that still ensures that the policy body is the governing body, and the taxing authority is the governing body, and the everyday management, the rest of the city management, just like the police chief and all these other things, right? And so I, I would recommend that maybe we look at different places, but it doesn't say that we don't already have a board, we would have to expand their, uh, kind of structure in our buildings. Grand opening, all this stuff, and some of just, uh, place holders, community engagement, website, social media, this is where that, that sign is gonna come in, you know, our electronic sign. Not only do we have a program for the new facility at that location, we need to get them somewhere throughout, have some of our entrance, exit corridors, where you can see these guys, right? And so that you know, hey, at the library, we're having this, we're enjoying, or we're doing this, or this will be the hall, the hat, the hat is the theme of the week, or whatever. Ongoing communication, we need more, that's universal for the city, we need more effective communication screen, that sort of thing. So this is an opportunity to really ramp that up. Hopefully, in our library, we'll use it. Charter, uh, it's gonna be the next introduction, you'll see that by Tuesday, October twenty seventh, as a reminder. Uh, and timeline for implementation, we need sixty-one days after your charter, uh, ordinance, and then, uh, we'll start the budget planning, staff milestones, with the budget process. Reason I say that, we wanna bring on a librarian to help us begin at round eleven, getting this thing. You can't open the doors and say, hey, hey, staff, go in there, what's the policy? How do you check out, or how do you check in, or how, the money, right? We don't need that, we'll, we'll be up and running in twenty twenty seven, so even late, but we need to start taking on these responsibilities sooner than later, in having these things. Now, you have to do it January one, no, spring, summer, we need them ongoing, when these decisions are being made, someone with experience can help us guide. Okay, I'm gonna have a children's hour over here, so put that space over here, they can help us guide on staff. And then when the doors open, they know what to do in the day. So those are the things, again, there's sixty-one day protests after the charter ordinance, that puts the sixty-one days at the end of May, so June, July. Uh, budgets, we can certify, we can do all those things, August, September, October. Now, what we're getting into is, we need to get notification on a couple of, let's say, September, we need to get notification on the interlocal agreement, that we're withdrawing from. And a budget request during the budget cycle, saying, we're gonna do these things, so please prep for it. And, oh, by the way, we want this money requested, transferred as soon as we have our library in place, because they can set, then give this money. So timeline is pretty quick, we can do it twenty twenty five, budget season, we need to do certain things, if we have a local agreement, by the agreement dates. And then, if we need to renegotiate some of the terms of that interlocal, for whatever reason, uh, we don't wanna drop out that suddenly, and you'll sit this for the next eighteen months, handle it for a library. So maybe it is, our interlocal strategy is a lot of spreading, there's some we can be created, there's lots of legal ways to do it, and I think they're flexible.
They don't check, they let people from Missouri come in, it's, anybody can go to libraries and stuff.
So if, if maybe those are legal and or official words, maybe, maybe not, so. But again, we need to give them official notices, the, the official, which is charter, the ordinance establishing, that we're funding, authority, and then we let them develop. Questions, comments?
Since we're not privy to the information on the buildings being built, and since I'm the most qualified person sitting in this room to make decisions on those, how many square feet is the building gonna be total?
Twenty-four plus thousand.
So we're, so we're giving up five thousand, I'm not opposed to library, but we're giving up five thousand. And so what is that gonna affect our future growth?
I really think it's programmed to accommodate quite a bit of growth personnel wise. Like, for example, if the police department needs a square foot that it is, because when they grow, their growth is police officers who are out on the street, they're not in the office at home, so. So, but that's accommodated, of city hall is circuit, we thought they overprogrammed, my friend said, wait a minute, why do we have these other fourteen offices? But they were going off programming again, that's from the past, and that's why this community was formed, and we've been doing all the work to get this opened in. Twenty-seven thousand square feet was gonna be twenty-two million dollars, that's out of budget, folks, we can't do that. So we need to be twenty-four thousand square feet, we need to be in the budget, and we get everything we need. Now, be patient, because here in just a couple of weeks, you're gonna hear from the folks, we're programming them in to bring you some, dear construction design, forget the words here, uh, that, that's gonna show what this building looks like, what the spacing is, what the office looks like, the entrances, all these things will be incorporated, and how much the, the money is applied to each one of these rooms, and if you can stay on, on track, so you'll be applied to all of them. And, and so that is coming up June, let's say, June for this stuff. We have a meeting, actually, we have a kind of open meeting for, on this stuff, uh, we, they're, they're fifty percent on construction design, if you will, some of the schematics is done on the fire department, so this coming week is all, well, this we're saying, is all about kind of primarizing the fire department, make it start that project. So that's the first piece that you're gonna see right away, the fire department piece, and I think you're gonna be pleased with what they've done, the money they've had. And, and we're gonna get everything that we asked for as much as possible, with add alternatives. What add alternatives do is just put things in reserve, in case the money wants to dry, and we have to just say, yeah, if you're the top ten priority, the number eleven, twelve, okay, let's put up beside, we fund them, we'll fund them later in the process.
When the unified government, excuse me, when the unified government was formed, back, I don't remember what year it was, it's been a long time ago. It, yeah, it was like in the eighties, wasn't it?
Ninety-seven.
Yeah, but anyway, uh, somebody was asking me about the library, and they said that the, and I haven't had a chance to look this up, but there was a vote in Edwardsville and Bonner Springs to join the unified government's library, uh, system.
I'll just speak to that, and I have a PowerPoint presentation, but essentially it shows the history of this, that was retooled later on to this interlocal agreement, which included USD five, like, and, uh, Mar Spring, and the head, I remember it was both, right? So when they formed that, statutorily, they formed that so they could be the taxing authority, right? So, and so it became more of a public library, not just related to the school. And so, uh, I don't believe Tyler has his own library. So they're, they're similar to our situation, they didn't have a building, so they joined this with us, and what happened with, my, my, what happened with Mar Springs, that's why they got some money, is where did we go? Edwardsville, Mar Spring, everything says that on it, right? Our schools, and all this, our camper, all these things, but what was happening is all our folks were wanting to do, uh, Mar Springs, and they're going, wait, but we don't tax it, we need a little bit of money to set it. And so they joined in with that, that's got a simplified version of it, but that was later, that was later.
So that the, the original vote and everything was dissolved to, to, you know, just so I can inform these people that are asking.
Yeah, from, from the early days, and I can count that, but I just don't have here in my notes exactly since that happened.
Yep, same here.
And I will, I'll, I'll give you the PowerPoint that's online, that's literally online, for my dot county, uh, library board, on the UCU website. That's where I got it.
I was gonna ask, um, if we can consider at least at the beginning to have the governing body as the advisory board?
Oh, yeah.
And then if we want to delegate later, but just to start.
Oh, see, so you don't need an advisory board.
So by default, we'd be the, the board, that's the only board that's necessary?
So if you don't want it structured in the ordinance to start with, I'll take it out, I don't wanna put it in there, that's the first item.
That would be fine. And then also, could, did you have an idea about how much that would save our community overall? And, um, we bring in a library and an asset right here to our community, they're paying out over half a million dollars to Kansas City, Kansas Library System now. Uh, how much do you think it would probably cost, did you say about three bills to run?
Well, yeah, I think, I think that's where we're at, and it's, well, that'd be one point eight, one point eight eight, that'd be the difference, you know, just off the top. But, but when we get closer, we'll have a better programming, um, what we really think is, your first year's gonna cost you a lot, because there's really things we've forgotten, where we just had the minus, and suddenly you're digging on that. But once that settles out, we will know exactly what we need. So it will be a part of the real structure of the city of Edwardsville, it will not be a separate library on our forms, it'll be a general fund. So it could be that we don't commit into the bill right now, it sustains it, or we gotta, we gotta grow three bills. We, we just don't know, till we get to the other budget, the rest of the twenty twenty-six budget, and, oh, by the way, adding this department. And so twenty twenty-six may not be as costly, in the sense of the general fund bill, when you add three more employees, and you add all the operational costs of the new building, we gotta pay for the, the lives, we have a building that has more lives and all, you know, all the operations stuff that go with it. So that may be, is it's cheaper in twenty twenty-six, plus, I'm sorry, the bills may need to increase, the revenue stream may need to increase, how, uh, to the, actually startup, the twenty twenty-seven budget. Maybe, it's kind of unfortunate, we see, but we're trying to program as much as possible. What I just gave you today, those numbers, they're not, they're not terrible out of line, because assessing three of these libraries, very similar to us, you look at Lansing, that's a, their structure, the way they've done theirs, they're a little bit, it's slightly bigger, but they've had time to grow. So we go, but just take a look at that.
Can you clear up one thing for me? So for years, I know we paid, we paid Bonner.
Not us, not technically.
Well, is that part, was that part of the?
So the county says, just five point four one, or if you use the four point eight, then.
Right. Right.
So our citizens pay into this fund, and then they give money to Mar Springs.
So that'll all end.
Definitely, all end, now.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
That will all end. Now, that will, for us, it will not end for Bonner Springs unless they change, within a local agreement with the White County Library.
No, I just wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
Moving on. Thank you very much, that's a lot of work, and, and I think it'll benefit our community greatly, um, thank you for that. Item eight here, presentation and potential name change request for the annual community, community festival currently known as Autumn Fest. Um, this one, a committee member and community member, uh, Jenna is here to share with us just some of the background as far as the, the heart behind that, and what has gone into so far.
Uh, Mayor Kahar, uh, members of the council, fellow community members, we've all been listening a long time this evening, so thank you for your patience and allowing me the opportunity to speak. Um, as the mayor said, I'm here as a citizen and as part of the planning group for the quickly approaching festival that we host as a city in the fall. Um, there's been kind of rumors of identifying the festival with the new name. Um, so I'd like to encourage the change and share some inspiration drawn from some of America's most unique and successful small-town festivals. These small towns are building big reputations with creative and unusual fest- festivals that embrace their uniqueness. Um, and I am just gonna kind of read to stay on track here. Um, the Roadkill Cookoff in West Virginia, their population is a thousand fifty people, and their attendance is over ten thousand. Um, the Turkey Trot Festival in Arkansas, their population is only twelve hundred people, and their attendance is over ten thousand. There's a Duck Tape Festival in Ohio, um, honoring a local manufacturer. And probably my favorite is the Testicle Festival in Montana. Population one thousand, attendance over fifteen thousand, a wildly cheeky celebration in honor of the Rocky Mountain oysters. So while the idea of renaming our event might seem, well, a bit nuts, I think that there, with a clear vision rooted in our past and aimed at growing our future, we can host an exciting new event in our town. The Edwardsville Potato Festival, a celebration honoring the agricultural roots of our city, which has quite literally been founded on the humble potato. Potato farming was a cornerstone of early Edwardsville, and a festival about potatoes reflects both our history and our hometown spirit. The city, the, the city's festival planning group has already spent hours of their time and effort planning around potatoes. And with this focused idea, we've been able to generate activities and ideas like potato sack races, um, renting potato sack slides, potato slush shots. It'll be easy to provide potato-focused food. Ideas included loaded french fries, baked potato bar, or mashed potato bowls. We'll encourage local food trucks to get creative with the potato as the star ingredient. This can be fun for the whole family with spaces and events designed for kids, like the Tater Tot Zones, including festival favorites like the DJ, face painting, bubbles, crafts, and more. Plus an area for adults, like the Old Spuds Lounge, live music, beverages, and more. So I encourage you to support trying this out for a year, letting the festival planning committee run with the progress they have already made in honoring the crop that has helped build Edwardsville and celebrate it in a way that's joyful, family-friendly, and unique. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, Jenna. Um, did anyone have any, sorry, questions, comments, anything?
I can stay for open dialogue?
You wanna change the name to the Potato Festival?
Correct, Edwardsville Potato Festival.
Not Tater Fest.
Correct, not Tater Fest. Um, Potato Festival, um, just kind of, again, in honor of the agricultural roots of our community. I, like, I welcome opinions or dialogue on, um, any of the ideas that the committee has already been planning. Otherwise, we'd certainly appreciate your support in trying it out.
And I think, um, part of it too is, and Jenna, uh, touched on this, was it wasn't just a name change, but an entire theme. That's, that all these hours have been focused toward, and, and events, activities, food, and all of this stuff that, um, has really gone into that. Um, and so what she had mentioned before was trying it out for a year, um, if it's successful, then maybe we, we continue, and if it's not successful, then scrap it. And then we say, okay, do we continue to, you know, do we go back to Autumn Fest, do we have this a fall event, do we reconsider if we continue that or not? Um, but since so much time and energy has gone into this so far this year, if council would consider, um, approving it for, for this year, seeing if it's successful, and go on from there.
Um, it's part of, it actually originated somewhat like Delta, KCK, for example, but it's a part of our contract, it started with, uh, waste management. That was all, waste management, and this carried on for, I guess my point is, that the council had to approve it, and they already approved it, like, I believe that.
I support that opinion.
See if it works, it works. Yeah, you're gonna have to tell me. I think historically, it went from Edwardsville Days back to the Autumn Fest through the council, so that's why I presented it as a candidate for, is that you're gonna have to have a official policy.
Did we vote in cleanup date?
Yes, you did, actually.
I, I wasn't here.
Well, you do that through your, your contract with the company.
We never voted the name.
Yeah, yeah.
We just called it.
Cleanup date, it's not today, it's even, I mean, you call it, I mean, I don't, me personally, I don't feel like we need to have it. Vote on the name. The budget for Autumn Fest, it's just, it, it, there is some historic reference to these names, Edwardsville Days and the Autumn Fest. Autumn Fest, Autumn Fest went from Autumn Fest to Edwardsville Days through the city council, the staff clearly gave a presentation, said we're trials. And it was, there was some relationship to the fall picnic. What happens there is the, uh, hundred-year celebration of picnic. And so what they did was Edwardsville Days, then in the spring, and in the fall, they approved the picnic, the fall picnic. And then that was so unsuccessful, that we went back to Autumn Fest through the city council, that was usually done. So I would say, I think, you know, stay on track with that, uh, that, that you're approving a festival that's called, not Tater Fest, I appreciate that. But maybe that's at least a better alternative. Look, why can't Autumn Fest be?
If we're.
Being, for example, but it doesn't go potatoes, autumn, you know, I mean, it's kind of, you could, uh, you could express it.
Or to the committee that's been working on it.
Yeah. It's, it's either, okay, so then it's either that or, like, give me an option to, can we change it for a year and see how it goes? If it's Edwardsville City, what did you say?
Edwardsville Potato Festival.
Okay, so if there's, if, yeah, yeah, if there's.
Motion to go for Potato Fest.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mullen, a second from Councilman Bishop, with a third, please call roll.
Bishop?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. I, I think this will be agreed, right?
Noted, we're very, yes, we're very excited about this opportunity, thank you.
Jenna, thank you for being here and all of your work on this project. Um, guys, I appreciate the move, I think we just needed a, a refresh, a rebranding, yes. The date was set, uh, at the meeting, at the budget hearing, we set the date for the.
Uh, yeah, it's October fourth, it's the first Saturday in October.
October fourth.
Well, it's October fourth. The sixth? When we did it, but it's, so it's the fourth, yeah.
For the record, clerk, please, what was you saying?
We had set it for September eighteenth in October, but then you set it for October.
Yes.
We're agreeing, I would say that for October fourth.
And I think the reason we did it is so we had flexibility for vendors and things for years to come.
And then, we're going around, like, homecoming.
Speedway and all of the rates, everything else, yeah.
The Potato Fest, Festival, Edwardsville Potato Festival. There we go.
Edwardsville Potato Festival, is that the record?
I don't know.
So I don't think it.
There we go.
All right.
Okay, next item up, consider a motion to recess into executive session for sewage KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two, or consultation with legal counsel which would be deemed privileged in a free-plant relationship. Um, how much time do we need on this one? Uh, so, why don't we say twenty, so we have a minute to go to the bathroom and get over there, um, to return at eight forty to include city manager and city attorney? So I just need a, so move.
Go move.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Adcox, a second, from Councilman Shriver, will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
The law?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
A motion to return to regular session, second. The motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. City manager report? Sorry, we got to the end and I was, sorry. I jumped the gun. It's getting late. Very good. Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman Mullen?
Yeah.
Councilman Bishop?
Yeah, I have just one thing, um, we need to pay attention, a little bit of time on Ninety-Eighth Street, South Kate thirty-two. I went down there the other day, and there were two trucks, two semis coming in opposite directions. He was trying to move, miss the giant hole here, and the guy was missing the hole, and they almost hit it on. They're gone. That's it.
Councilman Mott?
How we doing on a side of this cemetery?
Eric's on it, yes. Hopefully have that reduced, some constructed. City is releasing, and through the council layout, so now we should have it.
And then one other thing, uh, on, uh, when Metropolitan comes out on Ninety-Eighth Street, if the roads is in the road. If you're coming out of there, you wanna turn, you can't see if you're looking south, it's a sightline, and there's, it looks to me like it needs to be cut out. If they start selling houses. Sightline is, uh, probably gonna be snacking. I had a whole list of stuff with all.
Councilman Shriver?
I will too, I have a list, but I do wanna mention one thing, um, I would like to thank all the residents of Edwardsville Heights that came and asked the city to follow up, and I think, I, for lack of further letter, I think, um, Steve Johnson said he's like the neighborhood contact person, but if they were, if Chantal was able to get all their contact information, but if the city could follow up with them. Right, right, and I'll follow up on my other stuff next meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Adcox? Okay, I will be very quick. We had a mobile pantry last Saturday, um, great, thank you to the volunteers and city staff who helped pull that off, and our community partners. We had, we've served five hundred and six people, six thousand five hundred and nineteen pounds of grocery. And, um, wanted to invite everyone to a morning mingle event that we have coming up at the townhomes. Um, Highland Ridge Morning Mingle is May fifteenth, coming up this week from nine AM to ten thirty. I know they would love to see, um, governing body members there if they're able to come. Have a great evening. That's right.
City, citywide cleanup Saturday.